Good evening and welcome to the June 12th Late the Board of Education meeting here this evening. Joy, would you call it all?
Mr. Whitcliff?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Gary?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, again, everyone. This is an exciting meeting, the organizational meeting for our Board of Education. We will get right into the election of Board President and Vice President. Before we even get started, I'd like to go ahead and nominate Mr. Shannon Whitcliff as President for the 2018-19 school year. Second.
I move to cease nominations.
Second.
And I need a...
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Martin, a second by Mr. Shear. Is that right?
Yes.
Joy?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs... Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
And now I need a motion.
I move to elect Shannon Whitcliff to serve as the 2018-2019 Board of Education President. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Martin and a second by Mrs. Felter. Joy?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Congratulations.
You've got some more business to do, sorry.
No, you take over now.
Well, okay. Before we get started, I'd just like to thank the Board for putting their faith in me to do this, but as I told, and I think this was a conversation that Lea and I had had, I feel like this is such a good, high-functioning Board with great leaders that we lead as a team, and I would not expect that that would change at all. So the other thing that I want to do is just thank Mr. McKeon for his leadership this past year, you know, doing that with continued difficulties and questions legislatively in with a new superintendent isn't easy, and so we thank you for that, for your leadership.
Super difficult.
Also having a token for you.
It was a good transition. Thank you, Mr. Al. Well, I would like to also say thank you to serve the public. It is an honor to be here with, again, a high-functioning Board that we are, and I have learned a lot over the past year and still have a lot yet to learn, but with the support of them and support of you, I know that that will happen. I'd also like to thank Joy. She's been an amazing right-hand for me just throughout the year, keeping me on task and guiding me each month through this Board meeting. So thank you, Joy, for, I want you to support as well, too. So thank you.
There we go. All right, moving on, election of the 2018-2019 Board Vice President, and I would actually just go ahead and like to nominate Joe Beveridge.
I'll second. Oh, no, we cease, right? First?
Yes.
See, I had to botch it.
I move to cease nominations.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Shear, a second by Mr. McKeon.
Joy?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
I would move to elect Mr. Joe Beveridge to serve as the 2018-19 Board of Education Vice President.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. McKeon, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Joy?
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Very good. All right, moving on, 1.05, appointing a 2018-2019 Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and Treasurer.
I move to appoint Joy Bondurant, Clerk, Barbara Bame, Deputy Clerk, Merle Hastert, Treasurer of the Board of Education for 2018-2019.
I've got a motion by Ms. Martin, a second by Mr. McKeon.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
All right, and we need to appoint a school attorney.
I move to appoint Mr. Michael G. Norris of Norris &amp; Kevelinger, LLC, as a 2018-19 School Attorney.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. McKeon, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
All right, moving on, public comments, since you're sitting here, do you want to just go ahead and take that?
There's a reason I didn't take the card.
Well played, Joe.
Good job, Joe. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time to notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire Board. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded, for broadcast on the district's educational channel, and audio recorded for a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium tonight at the front of the room and state your name and your address, and I would ask if there are anybody that wishes to come to present to the Board.
All right, seeing none, we'll continue. Section 3, Consent Agenda Items. Anyone want to pull any of these off for discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Move to approve Consent Agenda Items 3.01 to 3.22 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
All right, moving on, Section 4, Bids, Contracts, and Agreements. Is there anything in here that anyone had a question on?
I'd just like to ask Mr. Hutchinson if he would talk about 4.02, the leased vehicles. Didn't have any specific questions, but I know we're in the second year of this agreement with this lease, so if you would, just kind of go through and explain a little bit to us, John.
I did a couple scenarios for you to try and explain why it's advantageous for us to either lease or own vehicles versus utilize for student-side buses for all of our activities, and I'll also get into kind of personal use, but I tried to make it as simple as possible, but I need to walk you through it anyway just because it's not real cut and dry. So let's take the example of a Suburban. We have a lot of... We have two Suburbans at each of our high schools, and our middle school's currently share Suburbans. We're actually moving to Transits. See, they're less expensive, actually have a better utility for what we're trying to do, but let's go with the Suburban lease. We've got a 60-month lease, and the cost of that lease in the end is $46,797. We actually do have a residual value. We will pay off the lease and then go to the market and sell that off, but I'm going to assume it's zero, that we're not going to get anything for it, even though as we entered into leases and sold some of our old fleet, we had anywhere from $5,000 to $9,000 for various vehicles, not all Suburbans. So at this point, we're at $46,700. Let's assume we utilize a life of 100,000 miles. We're going to pay about $20,000 in fuel for that operation, and conservatively, repairs are going to be $10,000. They usually don't reach that. We change the tires on it, we change the oil, but let's say we're all in for about As we try to compare that to, let's look at the realm of student activities, whether it's the tennis team or debate transporting kids versus looking for a student to do that. There are a variety of mix and matches, and I know Mr. Brady's been working with the Transportation Department, trying to find out what's the best way to do this, and I took three of their examples. First one is a three-hour charter. They're going to drive an hour, stay there an hour, and come back an hour. So you've got two hours of drive, one hour of layover. There are other, longer trips that are six hours, two hours of driving, and then a four-hour layover. And then there's, sometimes it's a real quick trip, but they're going to be there all day for a tournament, so the layover is seven hours. I came up with what, based on what we're charged for those types of charters, what was it per mile? So we have a wide variety, anywhere from $1.21 to nearly $5, depending on the circumstances. Our lease cost, if it's caught, if that vehicle's $77,000, 100,000 miles, it's about 77 cents per mile. IRS, if we were to use personal vehicles, reimbursement rate is 54 and a half cents. So I didn't word it very well. The first two lines are worded properly, but the savings per mile over using bus transportation to have a fleet of Suburbans at schools is 44 cents a mile to $4 per mile. In the life of that vehicle, it's 44,000 to nearly 400. Now, that's a very odd example off to the right. It's not a very frequent type of trip, but it is, we have hundreds of variations on our charters, so I just tried to show the spectrum. I probably, the last two lines are worded incorrectly. Let's say, hey, I look at that 77 cents versus 54 and a half, why don't we just pay teachers to transport the kids? It's not a great thing to do for insurance reasons. There's a lot of different liability reasons. You don't want a lot of students in cars with faculty and staff. So if you could do that, you could even utilize even more savings. So begs the question, all right, it's 54 cents, what about when you turn, when staff uses a vehicle? If we're, if you're saying it's, the lease is 77 cents a mile, shouldn't we just reimburse people and not let them use our Suburbans or any of our other vehicles? They're already more than paid for through the student transportation, so you're saving the 54 cents a mile by allowing for teachers to go to a conference at a neighboring district or whatever the circumstance is. They're predominantly used, we actually keep logs, for student transportation, but if they're available, we don't want them sitting idle. We'd rather avoid that reimbursement rate. So it's not real clear. If we 100% set that to the side and said, that's for staff use, we shouldn't do that. It would be much less expensive if we would just reimburse for the personal use of their vehicle, but that's not how it works on a day-to-day basis. It's if they're idle, not being used for student use, but predominantly they are, it's paying for itself. So it's not real cut and dry that I can calculate, this is exactly the savings, it depends on the situation, but I think you can see through the numbers that it's wise that we have a fleet of vehicles.
Any questions, John?
Did you say we have two Suburbans per high school and then the middle schools?
They share. So what we're asking tonight in the agenda item is to purchase two Transits. We, we have, actually, there's right now three middle schools sharing one, so this would balance it out, OATC and Chisholm, and then Summit and, I'm going blank on another. We need two. Then we also wanted to have a not-to-seed amount to start looking at some of the more aged vehicles at the service center, start to get into that replacement cycle again. We're looking at a couple of the heavier-duty trucks in replacing those.
I know we do have residual value. Do you know a ballpark for that, because that's not even factored in here, and it's still a rosy picture?
We have not done it at the end of a lease yet. As I said, we, the idea of leasing was also to try and keep them a little more current when they get to 100,000, sort of a sweet spot, they still hold value. Enterprise didn't really want to estimate for us, but I would just be making it up. I could say 5,800, and until we get through this first one, I really don't want to quote that. That's why I thought I'd be just very conservative and say it's, we're getting nothing for it, and it's still just phenomenal savings over bus transportation.
I remember when we started leasing, was that maybe, what, five years ago, four years ago, when we started leasing instead of purchasing, right?
Two or three years ago.
Okay, that's why we don't know. Okay. So it takes maybe, what, four or five years to get to the 100,000?
Yeah, we'll start to roll off of, on the Suburbans. Scott, is it your four? How long were we going with the?
Suburbans that are leased? Probably four years.
Four years. So another two.
These have come to kind of represent like the grand piano of Kansas City, Kansas. For some people in our community, they love to point at the Suburbans as like a wasted, you know, taxpayer dollar, and I, so I had asked for this, and I very much appreciate this, because I know that we're very, I don't want to say judicious, but frugal in how we approach things like this. It's not wasteful spending, it's very intentionally mindful of taxpayer dollars.
There are, there are neighboring districts that have five per high school, and actually, as we look at that, that may not be a bad idea. You could get a larger team transported, a baseball team, versus tennis, DECA, debate. So we're looking very heavily at how many should we have at those larger high schools so that we could capitalize that savings.
And so it would save them busing, right? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Charter rates are much more expensive than our normal set routes, especially with the layover.
There's another factor that isn't tied to the dollars because of, really, the national issue with getting bus drivers, and when we have a fleet that has to take debate team or athletes to a competition, they're having to do so outside of the bus route times to take students home. So we're actually having to pull students out of class at times much earlier than we would like, or pick them up later than the activity, because we've still got to run the traditional route for our schools. So, you know, what dollar amount do we put on instructional time as well? So I think there's, there's that component that is, is not measured in dollars or cents on a spreadsheet, but one that we know has an impact on students, and we want to try to minimize as much as possible.
I know that the golf teams, that especially affects them, and I mean, that sport, both my girls played, and they were gone a lot, so I mean, I think even academics, the performance academically is impacted if they're pulled out way too early or late, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Continuing on with Section 4, is there anything else, anyone having any questions on?
Can we just take a few minutes? 4.01, School Resource Officer Agreement, and not so much a questioning of doing it, but just the importance of having it within our school district and the important role that the SROs play. John or Rick, one of you, want to take just a few minutes to kind of talk a little bit about that? You know, the service that we get out of this, the importance that this is, the great agreement, partnership we have with the Department. Just take a few minutes, just making sure that we share that.
Sure. Thank you. I think that's a great question that many of our patrons want to know, and that is, what are we getting with our SROs? Certainly, we get the security aspect of the SROs, but that is, although it's very important, that's kind of a secondary role that they play. The biggest thing that I think we get from our SROs is the relationships that they build, so much so that if something happens in our schools, our students are going to the SRO and sharing those things with them. That's, that's immeasurable. It's so valuable. The professionalism, the training, the quality of person that we get with OPD is really incredible. And I'm sure you've met some of the SROs. They're very dedicated people, they're in it for the right reason, and they work really well with our administrators. So I think they're just invaluable to us as a layer within our strategy.
So with this, with what we're looking at here, does this, does this cover everything we need? Are we, do we have enough coverage? Do we need to, at some point, look for additional coverage and try to find ways to do that? Just thoughts and ideas?
Well, I know we have had some discussions about, you know, what is that sweet spot, if you will? What kinds of coverage do we need? And I don't think we've really landed on the exact prescription. I know in the past, we have looked at one per middle school and at least one at the high schools, and there's been some discussion about moving towards that with the city, but it's very, that's, it's a, it's a very difficult thing to say as far as, here's the prescription. Nationally, certainly, there's a push to put more SROs out there, but there's a combination of things in our strategy that really kind of plays into the best answer for that. So it's a, I'm not trying to talk around it, but it's a, that's, it's a difficult question to answer, and we have, we're having more discussion on it, though.
And I would point out that this agreement for the 2018-19 school year, it's 12 SROs and two supervisors. When we transition to the 19-20 school year, we add two additional SROs, and then we'll have further conversation around whether additional SROs are necessary after the 19-20 school year. You know, sadly, after we continue to hear each time around a school shooting, there are questions about SROs, and they're very valuable, but oven-by-themselves, outside of the other security things, as we look at the construction of our middle schools with creating the secured pinch-point entrance and those types of things, some of those schools that have tragically had those shootings have also had SROs, so it's, it's not the end-all, and working with the city in our partnerships, you know, one of the issues for the city in this partnership is being able to continue to add officers, not just from a financial standpoint, but finding the right people. And not any police officer can be an effective SRO, so that's something that we're very thankful that the city understands that as well and works with us. So I did want to point out, approval of this contract tonight, and the 19-20 school year will add two more SROs to, to our current numbers, from 12 to 14.
Well, I appreciate having the conversation, because I think we'd all rather have the conversation now versus having this conversation when tragedy happens and say, oh, wait, now we need to get things up. So it's better to look at this and talk about, and you're right, John, there's a balance, okay? It's not just the SRO, it's the pinch-point. It's all these other things that we do that we don't talk about at the time, but this is the time, to me, is the time to talk about them and make people understand, we're looking at this. This is not just sign the contract and go. It's saying, what else are we doing? What else can we put in place? We've got our eyes on this, and we can be as prepared as we want to be prepared, but you never know what's going to happen. But it's best to have those conversations now and for the public to know that we're having these conversations, so appreciate it.
It is a very strong partnership between the district and the city as we look at this program and their support, and, you know, I know that that'll continue as we move forward in the future as well.
If I could add to that, I think that's what makes us unique, is we have the benefit of our main footprint matching kind of the name of our district with the city of Olathe, and I know we reach out to other communities, but we're not in like 18 cities, and so to have a partnership with the city of Olathe where, in this instance, it's 50-50 split on the cost, I mean, that's quite a blessing to our district, so we're very grateful, grateful for your work with it.
That actually, that brings up an interesting question. We have schools that are outside of Olathe, so do the Olathe officers still serve in the Overland Park and Lenexa area?
We're very fortunate to have partnerships with Overland Park and Lenexa as well, and because we have elementary schools in those cities, they support us as well.
So if there was an issue at Bantwood, an Overland Park officer would respond?
Correct.
Okay.
And the same with Lenexa.
You know, when, I think when I first started on the Board, we had SROs in our elementary schools, and I remember, you talked about relationships, and one of the comments that was made at the time was that for some kids, depending on the neighborhood they live in, the interaction with an SRO might be the only positive experience with a police officer that these kids get to have, and so when we talk about what are appropriate levels, I think, I think that's an important part of the conversation, and, you know, funding is always the challenge, but, you know, if we ever see the day, I think it would be worth having that conversation. Definitely.
We'll take also an opportunity to give you some new information, because we just received confirmation of it late this afternoon, of a grant that we applied for. We'll come back with greater details in August with that, but you want to give the elevator overview of the benefit of the grant that you've...
We're very fortunate. The state put out some funding for Safe Schools, and with that, they put out a number of categories that the money could be used for, and as we went through those categories, we were very pleased to say that we met many of the requirements that they're suggesting. Two of the things that we requested, one being the visitor management system, which is HallPass, the other, expansion of our digital radio footprint to increase our capacity in emergency communications. We were very fortunate to be awarded that grant with a 50-50 match, and we'll be working towards acquisition and moving towards yet another layer of security for our schools. So we're just very grateful for that and very fortunate to receive that news.
About $155,000.
Oh, wow. Wow.
Good.
And so the matches out of our, our budget, and then they match it. How did you find out about the grant?
The grant was advertised statewide, and...
Thank you for watching for it.
The Board of Education, State Board of Education, was a very big part of getting in touch with everyone and letting us know about that.
Good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I'd just add that it is important, the culture piece that our SROs bring. I'm a youth mentor for a kid at California Trail, have been since he was a fifth grader, he's an eighth grader now, and let's just say that school hasn't always been his favorite thing to do, but because in part of his relationship with his SRO there, he was moved to apply to the 21st Century Academy at Olathe West for Public Safety, was accepted, and is actually really excited about going to school, so I thank you guys and what you do.
Good story.
Any others on this section that we would like to discuss? If not, I'd look for a motion.
I move to approve Action Items 4.01 through 4.06 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. McKeon.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Okay, Action Other, Section 5, I think we need to approve our meeting dates, times, and locations. Can you get a motion there? Because I think we're going to have to take these one at a time.
I move to adopt a resolution to establish 2018-2019 regular meeting dates, times, and locations per Kansas statute.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Shear.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Okay, 5.02, Appointment of Board Representatives. I think we need a representative for Head Start Policy Council as well as the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. Do we have anyone with interest or anyone we'd like to nominate?
I'm currently serving on the Public Schools Foundation Board. I think, don't they ask for a two-year?
Usually. I believe so.
So I would like to continue that if no other Board members want to arm wrestle the board.
I think that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
And I'm on Head Start, and I spoke with Mr. Gary about serving on that, and I promise I'm not lying.
Yeah.
Even though he's not here tonight.
This is our new vice president, though.
I'm planning to nominate him as well.
I would move to appoint Brian Gary to serve as the 2018-19 Head Start Policy Council I would move to appoint Brian Geary to serve as the 2018-19 Head Start Policy Council Board Representative, and Amy Martin to serve as the 2018-19 Olathe Public Schools Foundation Board of Representative.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeon, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
All right, next item, KASB, Governmental Relations Network Representative. Who's currently that?
I've been serving on that for the last couple of years, and I honestly don't know what my responsibilities are. So I'd be willing to continue, but if somebody else wants to pick it up, it's a really easy one.
You can sign me up for that if you still don't know. Either way, it's fine.
Well, I think it says in the content that it's, everybody gets the information, but they like to have a go-to person if they need it.
Yes.
And I think with your relationship with KASB, Mrs. Martin, I think if you're willing to continue.
I nominate Ms. Felter.
Okay. There you go.
We have to cease nominations first.
I move to cease nominations. Second.
That's so confusing.
That's always a tricky one.
So who cees?
So a motion by Mr. McKeon, a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
And then a motion to appoint Mrs. Felter?